Yeah, I've got a mess.
All right, very well. I'm just gonna call that. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Wareham Zoning Board of Appeal. Tonight's Wednesday, March 8, 2023. And we are at the Multi Service Center 320, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass. I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Make a roll call to my far left, our regular member, Mr. Richard Semple. My far right, Mrs. Ronge, the Lebanese, regular member as well. And our clerk, Jim Akabachi. Also on Zoom, we have our alternate member, Mr. Troy Larson. Myself, the Chair, Nazir Al-Khulasi. Our Town Planner, Mr. Ken Buckland. And I want to welcome Mr. Jonathan, forget the last name.
Dickinson.
Dickinson, our Assistant Planner. So, welcome to onboard. Also present, our Building Commissioner, Mr. Paul Turner. And Assistant Town Planner, Mrs. Raposo. Sonia Raposo. So, we have some minutes to do for January 22, 2023.
I have reviewed, and I find no errors in the minutes. I'm willing to sign if the Board so votes. Make a motion to approve.
Aye, second.
Okay, I have a second. By Jim, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain? So, we're 5-0-0. So, apparently, Mr. Larson is gonna be sent on Mr. Morrison's chair. So, until we hear from Mr. Morrison. All right, we're gonna go continue the public hearings. 1-23, Ronnie's Realty LLC. 3178 Cranberry Highway. Okay. Public hearing's still open. Mr. Akabachi chaired the meeting. He will continue to chair this one.
Do you want me to continue?
Yes. Yeah, he started it. You might as well finish it.
No good deed goes unpunished. Okay. Do you have new information to hand out, or is this it?
I submitted, gotten new information.
You did, okay.
I said, I don't know, Tuesday, I believe this is the town?
So, now, it's just...
So, there should be some half sizes with some full size.
Yeah, and I see a...
There was some from the Commissioner also online today.
It was an email that went out as well.
Yeah, I saw everything via email and...
I have it online, if you guys want to read it.
Everybody has a copy of...
Is this the same?
I think it's... This is from... This is from Jillian, and this is from GAF. So, Bill, sorry.
So, Mr. Akabachi's will be chairing where you're sitting?
Yes, I'm sitting.
And I believe that Mr. Larson was at the last hearing.
He was present.
Okay.
He was present.
So, you do have five members. You do have five.
Got it.
You have five, yep.
If you like, I can start. So, we should have an updated plan, that little half-size plan. Last time we met, there was the introduction of the initial plan. And the concerns involved parking. There was concerns possibly regarding the parking along the side of that entranceway. And we had an abutter here as well, speaking to that. So, a lot of the changes on that new plan are to make very clear what the plan is on the side. And Mr. Madden can speak to that. But I would like to just speak to the... Something that was discussed last time and, you know, have some clarity and finality on it regarding site plan review. So, and that was why we had had the response from the Commissioner, and perhaps he can speak to that as well. We are under the 10 parking limit. And for this site, I think there was discussion possibly of thinking that we needed to do that. So, I'd like to know if the Board's still thinking that that is something that they're looking for. So, then we would be able to discuss our point of view more. Mr. Madden has some... Actually, printed out 1520, so you can look at it. You probably have it in your zoning book as well. But that is where it discusses the trigger for that site plan review on a proposed site. You wanna pass that out?
Yeah, I'll pass. I'll use a piece of... Set to 1529, the second page. I substituted two words for several words that are in the bylaw for clarity in that description. And, you know, we can go over those. Because I think it really sheds a lot of light on how the language is written in by substituting those two words. Or making synonym for the words that are in the bylaw. I think it reads a little easier. And I think it provides a little clarity that perhaps the Board might be able to...
Is this regarding how the cars accounted?
No, not necessarily. It's regarding the terminology that's in the bylaw when they say, "other than a single-family dwelling." There was some discussion on "other than a single-family dwelling" at the prior meeting. So, if we take that word, those words, "other than," and go to the dictionary and look up a synonym for those, equal to "exclusive of." So, if we were to take "other than" and substitute "exclusive of," because they're one in the same, it says "exclusive of" single-family and two-family residences. So, that would mean that you don't count them in the parking count in this instance. Furthermore, down the line, we go 10 or more parking spaces, regardless of the number of parking spaces that exist. Well, "regardless" can be changed to "in spite of." In spite of the number of parking spaces that exist on the site, they're not counted toward the site plan review. So, what we're looking at now is what the proposal consists of, which is using the existing office building as an office in a two-bay, two-service bays for the motor vehicle service. And just historically, we've done a project with 10 garage bays. We've done two projects with three garage bays in town over the last 15 years, maybe 20. Each and every one of those plans were approved. And each and every one of those plans used two spaces per bay, as per the bylaw. So, when Ronnie came to me and talked about this, you know, one of the first things we looked at is whether we needed to go to site plan review. And being familiar with Article 15, 1520, the position was, at least that I advised him, that based on my reading of the bylaw, that site plan review would not be required for the proposed project, which is the two-bay motor vehicle service garage. So, I think we'd like some... See what the thought is on that. I mean, clearly, by review of the drawing, the elements that are contained within site plan review are all contained on the drawings. We clarified a little bit more over the period that we continued the meeting and added a few more things. And I wanted to add a few things just for clarity, because I just felt... I came in late to the meeting, and I felt that I probably didn't do a good enough job explaining what the situation was.
I'm listening to you.
So, that's where we are with the issue of site plan review. So, applying the parking, Article 9 parking, to our site, we need two spaces for the office building. We need four spaces for the motor vehicle service bays, for total six. The residential uses, single-family residential uses that are not included in this review are shown. We showed you how we provided better parking than what currently exists. You had an abutter... We had an abutter here at the meeting that was opposed to on-street parking. Well, I guess it wouldn't actually be on-street parking, because the parking that we propose is on-premise parking. But they were opposed to on-street parking. And we met with him last Thursday in the field. I explained how we were going to approach that and just have one parking space on the premise, and how we're gonna mark that space in the field. And the way we're gonna mark it, if I just can elaborate on it a little bit, is we're gonna take a piece of granite curb, and we were gonna set it flush with the surface of the shoulder of the road or the land in which the parking space is to be located. That way, it would be there...
They could drive over it, but it'll be visible, is that...
You can plow snow over it, you can drive over it, and it's permanent. It's not paint, it's not a beanpole, it's not a sign. So, we felt that that accomplished a portion of what was sought to be accomplished with that on-street parking element. In addition, we... You know, in that parking space, it's a parallel parking space. According to the parking bylaw, it needs to be nine and a half feet... I think nine feet wide by... Nine and a half feet wide, rather, by 22 feet length. And that's what we have provided on the property for that use. Then, we just... We removed this demolition plan that we have here. We removed everything that doesn't need to be there. So, all the handicap ramps, these wood ramps, the landing area in front of the building, all that has been removed to accommodate additional parking. And our site plan... Now, our new site plan shows the modification of the parking.
So, they had handicap ramps before, and now they don't need them? Is that what it is?
Well, that's gonna be the office. It's gonna be by the... It's gonna... No, we're putting a new handicap ramp in.
But elsewhere?
On the same building, at the same building, I'll show you.
Yeah, just...
Our handicap ramp would now begin on the easterly side of the building, and then ramp up, and then we'd relocate the entrance door to the opposite side. By doing that, we were able to have our eight-foot striped-out area for the handicap parking moved toward the vehicle circulation side of the site. So, we thought that was just a better feature to have there. So, we have... Getting back to the parking for the residences, we show another parking space here, right in front of the building. And then, there's two parking spaces right here for this back building. So, we're showing bollards on the ground protecting the adjacent land from somebody driving on it. Those bollards will have a sign on it. The sign is right up here, it says, "Resident Parking Only Sign." So, we're gonna have those two spaces designated for resident-only at that location only because of the use that's proposed, the motor vehicle service use. We didn't want that to be clouded by not having resident spaces appropriately marked. So, those are nine and a half... Those four spaces right there are nine and a half by 19 per the parking bylaw. And the one handicap space is provided per EDA standards. So, we have essentially four parking spaces here, two of which are for the residents, two of which are for the waiting room, the office area. We have two spaces in the bays, each one of the bays for parking. We show an employee parking space at 10 by 20 on the side of the building. And then, we had a queuing space right in front of the overhead garage door. So, that would bring us to the total of six parking spaces needed for this facility in the four parking spaces that had previously been provided for the residential use on the site. So, that's how we came up with our parking. We have a driveway entrance with a trench drain across it. We're providing onsite drainage that's per the DEP Stormwater Handbook. It's also per the general bylaw of Town of Wareham for stormwater management. There is a stormwater bylaw in the town, in the general bylaws. This drainage system will comply with those standards. On the other side of the building with the garage bay is we have drainage for the roof runoff. We're infiltrating the roof runoff into a couple of leaching galleys. They've all been designed for the... We didn't show it on the plan, but they're designed for the 100-year event. So, the dotted line that designates the limit of those areas is what the galleys in the Crestone will occupy. But that's what we have on the park. And I have more to go. I don't know what you'd prefer to talk about first. And, you know, the parking, we think, is... We thought it might be first and foremost.
As you've been talking, I personally am wondering, do you know if they've indicated if there's gonna be any takings when they continue the improvement of that section of Cranberry Highway? You know, right now, they ended down at Red Brook Road, or just passed it. And I assume there's gonna be another whole phase upon that completion. Has anybody indicated if any of this land is gonna... Do you know? Just in general?
I didn't look. I did not look. I don't know if the plans are completed to that degree. I think they are, but I'm not certain.
So, and right now, if I go down there, it looks like a U-Haul terminal.
U-Haul be eliminated from the site.
Okay, so the U-Haul trucks are gone?
Gone.
They're not yet, but...
In the event... I think that...
If they get an okey-dokey on this, then U-Haul gets a goodbye on that.
Yes.
And I know the Board had some questions about the hours of operation. How many employees are going to be there? So, we did discuss that with our client.
No, nobody.
It'd be a maximum of two employees. It's just gonna be him. There might be someone in the office kind of scheduling appointments. The hour is 8 to 6, Monday through Saturday, is what he's proposing. So, this isn't a high-volume... There are other places on Cranberry Highway that you see tons of vehicles at. I don't think this is going to be one of those sites.
And it's intended to be an inspection, mass inspection station?
Yeah, we have the stickers.
What about auto repairs?
Possibly.
The second bay is... It's being presented as auto...
So, one bay for repairs and one bay for inspection?
Oil chain repair, and so we are anticipating that.
Okay.
If we get the machine, maybe we never get the machine to do inspection.
Yeah. On the... Your question on the takings?
Mm-hmm.
Ronnie hasn't been advised by Mass Highway...
That's the answer I was looking for.
Yeah. They would have sent out the notice and how much he was gonna get for...
But I heard Ronnie say, "if we get the machines." So, that means you're not guaranteed to be an inspection bay?
It's wanna be like lane, how you said. We wanna wait till they give us, maybe one year, maybe two years. If somebody sell his inspection machine in town, I'd be approved to get it. If not, it'd be empty for till I get the inspection.
So, was it just a... Like liquor licenses?
Yeah, not familiar if there's a cap on that, but I think that's what he's talking about.
So, if somebody gives up their machine, then...
Yeah, I'd be allowed to buy it, because now they allow many machines in the town. Not much, not like before, you can buy the much you want.
Okay, well, those were my questions. Are you, like, for now, good? I want to open it up to the Board.
Well, I do have a couple of other things...
Okay, keep going.
...to point out, because it does apply to the site and what we're proposing. And I think maybe some of the information is... Are things you might want to hear. We already talked about the number of employees. You talked about the hours of operation. Any signage that would be proposed would be compliant with the zoning bylaw. It'd be just a small sign or a sign on the building. Lighting for the site, there would not be any site lighting, per se, other than wall packs on the face of the building, likely above each door, the overhead doors, the pass door, the man door, and the pass door at the office. We have shown site landscaping around the new portion, the developed portion of the site, that landscaping would be in compliant with the landscaping bylaw. We've... I've discussed the drainage with you. You know, we have a trench drain across the throat of the driveway that enters into the site. And that will be discharging into an underground leaching facility. As far as sewage disposal, we are on-town sewer. There is already a sewer connection on the site. The garage will require an MDC interceptor for the floor drains that are required by the plumbing code to be installed. That will be... That will all discharge into the municipal system. As far as the inside of the building with the floor drains, we're going to be... This will be operated as a dry shop, what's considered a dry shop. There's no vehicle washing on the inside. The only moisture or water that should be there is drippage from a vehicle that might be in the building at that time. Any spillage on the floor, whether it be power steering fluid, oil, grease, whatever it is, it's all to be picked up with absorbent material, containerized individually for pickup by a licensed disposer and properly disposed of. We also show a dumpster with an enclosure on the plan. It's gonna be a six-cubic-yard dumpster. It'll be on an eight-by-eight pad with an enclosure. It's on the... Right over here, it's on the south...
It's in the point over here, yeah.
Side of the building. Let's see, what else do we have here? As I mentioned, the stormwater does meet, will meet DEP and Town of Wareham standards. We are not proposing any on-street parking whatsoever. All parking is off-street on the premises. Dry shop, the parking spaces I went over. And we feel that there is suitable maneuvering area on the site to back... To pull into a garage bay, to back out on the site, and to enter onto Route 28, Cranberry Highway, without the need to back on to the roadway. There's not a need for any deliveries. Most of the deliveries that would be made there would be car parts, and they'd either be picked up by the operator or delivered by an auto parts dealer on an as-needed basis for what's going on there. And town water, we have. We're gonna extend that to the building. And that's pretty much about... Pretty much it. Wedgwood Way and Wedgwood Place, those are both private... Those are private ways. They're 30-foot-wide private ways. The traveled way, the pavement width, is 12 to 14 feet throughout the project area. There's more than one interference in that roadway as you go around. If you were to go down Wedgwood Place, you'll see there's a large container on the east side of Wedgwood Place. You go down to where the land points together, where the roadways come together, you'll see, if you've been down there, there's... I don't know what they are, stumps, top ends of telephone poles that are right on the edge of the pavement that are in the layout of the roadway. As you find your way around Wedgwood Way, you head over here to the westerlymost portion. There's railroad ties and planting areas in the layout. None of... Just to point out, none of these have anything to do with the applicant in his petition before...
Information purposes only, I get it.
I mentioned that I would look at that, and I did. And I've been there, I would say, at least a half a dozen times since the last meeting. I've never run into another car. And actually, hadn't seen anybody parked on the side of the road. But perhaps that was due to the time that I made my visit.
So, I'm gonna stick the rest of the Board on you in a second. But Wedgwood Place and Wedgwood Way are private. They're not... The town doesn't... Hasn't taken maintenance of them or anything like...
They're privately unmaintained by the town.
Privately unmaintained by the town, okay. So, it would be up to the town to put traffic controls, if you would, or speed limit signs, or one-way signs?
I don't know if that would be considered maintenance. You know, I think that the owners, the adjacent owners...
The people who live there can't go put up a sign and say, "60 miles an hour maximum speed," or anything like that, or 15 miles an hour?
I don't know the answer to that question.
Because I'm just... I've been down there a few times too. And, you know, if I was one of the five houses on these two streets, I'd wanna establish Wedgwood Place as one way in, and Wedgwood Way as one way out. You know, I don't know if they can, as a neighborhood, voluntarily...
Would that go through the road commissioners, or...
I have no idea, you know? That's why I asked the question. I just, you know, if... You know, that's why, you know... Like I said, if I lived there, I'd go get some one-way signs and nail them up and wait for somebody to challenge me. But that's just me, because, you know, I'm such a conformist.
We share that same sentiment. That was something that we think would make a lot of sense.
So, okay, it's just... Yeah, it was just a comment. Does that kind of conclude your intended presentation?
I have one more thing to say.
Sure, go ahead.
Are you done, Bill?
Sure.
Okay. So, everything that Bill just said was extensive and not a full ray of what you'd see in site plan review. But if you recall your site plan reviews, that's what the engineers are giving, right? An impact statement, the mitigation, what's going on there. But really, why we're here is for that use variance, that initial letter from Mr. Turner, speaking that we need to have a variance for the motor vehicle service. So, that was from my initial letter, where we had talked about that this won't be substantially detrimental to the neighborhood. So, I think we wanted to give you all the information regarding the site plan and how each of those pieces flow together. But what you're really... You're voting on is if you think that this would be a detriment to that area, if it's not gonna help the area. But we believe that it meets all of the other criteria. We're not looking for any sort of variances with building cover. We're actually, like, helping that. Currently, there's a 40%. The proposed build will be 26.25. We're adding landscaping. We're trying to... We know that commercial property is valuable. And we do want Cranberry Highway to be... It's new. Everyone's going down Cape that way, so we want to capitalize on it. So, we do think this fits in with the nature of the neighborhood, and we hope you guys consider that.
So, the word "variance" has been used a whole bunch of times. The modus operandi here is to say a special permit. Are you here for a use variance, or are you here for a special permit?
That could have been my error for...
Pardon me?
I said, "That could have been my error." Let me pull up the letter. It is special permit, I'm sorry. Because we're not on a variance standard.
We're looking for a special permit, a change of use. Okay, just make...
Thank you for the clarification.
I wasn't, you know... I made a mistake once too.
Just once.
Once, yeah.
Me too.
But the divorce court took care of that. So, if that's the end, Veronica, any comments, questions, concerns?
So, I just wanted to get one clarification. I know you said the U-Haul is going away. So, the initial letter was for the U-Haul service, and that is not the case anymore. You're not asking for that anymore.
Yep, I mean, we spoke to the Commissioner. I know about that too, that's a concern. So, if this does get approved and he's moving forward, this is what he wants to do there.
Okay.
Yep.
Other than that, I know that you put a lot of effort into the presentation and would like to get this moved forward and approved for your applicant. But unfortunately, my opinion of this has not changed. I just feel it would be a detriment at this point, because there's... It's just a lot very tight to me, looking at this. But I don't know what the rest of the Board thinks.
Richard, over to you. We're gonna be picking on you next, Troy.
So, it was an inspection station, but it all predicates on the machine. So, until then, it's gonna be a two-bay mechanic shop garage, right?
That's the category in the zoning bylaw that made the application under motor vehicle service, yes.
Okay. And I guess most garages just pick up oil and spillage and put it with speedy dry and put it in a bag and throw it in the trash? But you're saying that somebody professional is gonna come take the debris away?
No, that's exactly what I said when we said it's gonna be a dry garage. That's how you manage the spills in a dry garage with speedy dry absorbent pads, containerizing those, put those in a larger container for proper disposal by a licensed disposer at a licensed location. I think we're talking the same language on that one.
Well, that's what I was just saying. You proposed that to us. You said it was dry, it was gonna be picked up by a professional, all this other. So, I'm just trying to clarify how, when it's not gonna be an inspection station, how much that's gonna be going on, and how many vehicles might be sitting in the parking lot waiting to be worked on? You know, as an inspection station, you got an appointment to come in, you get inspected, you back out, you go. Now, you're talking about mechanic building in there, having people stopping in. I don't know. I guess I'm gonna stick with my thoughts, and I think it's a little tight myself. And thank you.
Troy, I threatened you to be next, so if you can hear us online, questions, comments, concerns?
Well, my biggest concerns, like everybody else's, was the congestion on the side streets there. I feel that it's detrimental to the neighbors if there's gonna be, you know, any excessive congestion and traffic through there. But my other thought is, or question is, who's... If it's a private street, whose responsibility would it be to maybe take care of those other impediments that are in the... that are in the street that are blocking flow?
Well, I think before anybody else tries to answer your question, actually, that's really has nothing to do with this application.
Okay.
So, you know, you know, I hate, I mean, I know what you're saying. We hear these stuff, and what triggers, what triggers when somebody puts a flowerbed in the street, or parks a boat in the street, and it's there for 10 years rotting and, you know, but this, this hearing doesn't trigger that. Although I guess civically, we could all take responsibility and call the highway department.
Okay.
That the end of your question?
Yeah, no, I, from getting, I was with everybody else, and my concern was the congestion.
Nazzy, you've been online throughout the whole process, comments, questions?
So, we got a letter today from the commissioner. How are you guys going to address it? He believes it's a site plan, and nobody talked about it, so how are you going to?
Well, I think I saw the commissioner come walking in. Let's ask him to come up and make, make his, make that statement so that we can discuss it. If you don't mind, Paul, Mr. Turner, whatever.
And also, for, for, could we make the site plan conditional on approval? Because I-
Go ahead, Mr. Turner.
Hello. So when I first looked at this in October, I admitted in my email to you that I made a mistake, simple mistake in my notes.
Yeah, well-
Might have got distracted, et cetera. But if I had counted it correctly, which it is 10, I would have sent them for a site plan-
Review.
Review. Speaking with Mr. Madden yesterday, rereading this a half dozen, dozen times, I'm not quite sure.
You don't know if it means site plan, yeah?
I respect Mr. Madden's argument of how, how to read it. So when I read it, eliminating other than a single-family or two-family residence, so if we just start from the beginning. Any new development, expansion, or change of use, which would, under the parking schedule, require 10 or more parking spaces. But they're proposing only generate six, new ones.
Okay.
So, again, I think we should talk about it.
So, as you read it, it says the new use requires six, and, and the bylaw says new uses would need to require 10 to trigger a site plan review. Is that what you're seeing?
Correct.
Yeah.
I've seen it that way.
Yeah, so-
When I came to Wareham, you know-
I'm not sure-
-to learn, and, and I was instructed, you know, 10 spots invoke the site plan review. So that mistake, maybe we are today.
I'm not, yeah, I, I get you. I'm with you. I, I read it five or six times myself. I did exactly the same thing, because I knew it was going to. All right, any questions, anybody? Go ahead.
So you believe it needs a site plan?
He believes it doesn't.
I would say no, the way it's written. It's something that we should address and make it clearer, or increase the-
For the future.
The requirements of the parking.
But as far as the rules are right now, and as far as the way the rule is written right now, whether we agree with how it's written or not, what's written says Mr. Madden's interpretation is the correct one.
Yes.
So they're not triggering a site plan review, and our decision for a change in use has to be based on what's been presented, not on a site plan review.
Yeah. I, I think parking regulations definitely need to be looked at. Another item, when you look at this site, maybe this might not be the time, but you have 10 spots, but then by the IBC, you're required to have one accessible spot, handicap spot. So actually, they only have nine spots, if you think of it that way, too. So there's a lot of issues, not so much with the site and with the zoning.
But we can't punish this applicant for what we think should be?
Correct. Yes, I agree. Just bringing it out for discussion.
This is where we are.
Correct.
Any, any other board members, including you, Troy, that want to ask Mr. Turner anything on this matter in particular?
I, I personally believe when it's, that it's a good idea to have a site plan when it's tight like this, but it's up to the board. I'm only one person, so it's, it's a tough site.
Here's, here's where I'm sitting, I'm sitting, listening to everybody, whether, I've heard, I've heard at least three dissenting comments from the board so far. So regardless, it doesn't look like, I don't even know if we're going to get a motion to approve, or we might get a motion to deny, from, from what I'm hearing. So, anyway, we have heard from everybody. I guess, Mr. Turner, hang tight, because we want to open it up to the public right now, and-
Okay.
If they got any questions, you bear available for us.
Can I make one comment before?
You can make two if you want.
Okay. If that is the case, there'd be something, then we'd want to withdraw and get a revised letter from the commissioner to then be able to bring that to you. I know we've had situations where we have gone, I've got, got in front of a variance, and you have decided that it's going to go through a site plan. So we need that documentation. So it asks to hold on a vote, vetted dissent.
You're requesting, if we get to that point this evening, that you're going to go, clear your throat, and I'm going to say, wait a minute.
Yep.
We want to continue.
Yep.
Okay, so, thank you.
If I may, well, if it doesn't, if the bylaw doesn't trigger a site plan, a site plan review, I don't think the board could impose a site plan review, however-
The commissioner can, if there's interpretation.
Exactly, and however, the boards simply could say it's detrimental and deny it.
We would withdraw before a vote.
She wants to prevent that from happening.
Well, we could make a, like, we could pull a vote, an official one, to see how everybody feels, so we don't waste everyone's time. I suggest this. Wouldn't you agree, Counselor?
Yeah, I would, I do, I know that Abutter's here, so I want to give him a chance to speak, though, and then maybe we'll do that.
Go ahead, Drew.
I think I know what it is anyway, so-
Let the others go.
The flavor of the board.
Yeah, I, I think we're on the same-
Yep.
We're listening to the same radio, and we're tuned into the same station, I believe.
Yeah.
So we're going to open it up to anybody that's here this evening from the public that would like to comment in either in favor or opposed to this application. To please, you know, come forward, state your name. You don't have to raise your hand, just stand up and walk up. Thank you.
Five minutes.
You want a pre-?
Only five minutes.
Oh, okay.
Not much.
And it's, is it Simone?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Simone, I'm going to, I'm going to request, if you can't say it in five minutes, I'm going to shut you down, just so you know. So get the important stuff out there.
Okay, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for this opportunity to speak. We have not had access to the plan, either as it existed a month ago or as it exists today. We're only speaking from the point of view of what we see on the ground. And what we see between last month and this month is no change. This very minute, there are three cars parked along that roadway, not on the prop, not on the Cranberry Highway property, but on Wedgewood property, even though those cars belong to the residents of the Cranberry Highway property, as we speak right here. So that hasn't changed in a month. As far as the trucks are concerned, the U-Hauls, they're still there. So from our view, nothing has changed. What I do understand, and I've had the plans sort of waved in front of my face, you know, in the wind, but never really sat down and had a chance to look at them, is that I see, still see cars, a car parked along Wedgewood Way on a piece of property that, on the Cranberry Highway end, is about nine and a half feet wide. But as the property moves up toward, toward the north, to the end of his property, the business property, the foundation is here and the property line is two feet away. So while you can draw rectangles within that, it's basically a long, pie-shaped piece of land with his land, okay, to the east, and the Wedgewood property. That includes the driveway and the berm, you know, to the west. So our petition last time was very simple, and it really hasn't changed. We want no cars along the side of Wedgewood Way. There's also in the new plan that I happened to glance, a car parked on the front of Little House. Now, I don't know if you've seen that property, but it's pretty close to the highway. So you put a car in front of that, you're going to be blocking the view of the people coming out onto the Cranberry Highway. We're going to have to go farther out onto the highway to see if the traffic is coming. So that's problematic. The conclusions we're drawing right now, and again, we haven't seen the plans, is that this is too much enterprise with too many people and too many cars in a limited space. And what's happening is they're sticking cars here, and they're sticking cars there, and sticking cars other places, some of which are on his own property, and that's none of our business. But some of it intrudes into, what's the word they use in football? Encroaches, okay, onto the Wedgewood roadway property. And that, as I said last time, is our main artery to the world. We have no access from Wedgewood to Indian Mound, nor to Jefferson Shores. We have to use those, those roadways. Personally, I'm less concerned about Wedgewood Place, even though it's a much smaller and lower kind of thing, which is fine for entrance, but it's a very bad exit, because when you come out, it's low, and you're, basically, your face is the same level as the roadway. So it's very hard to see coming out. So that's okay as an entrance. But Wedgewood Way is the main roadway, and it's only one car wide, plus probably a few feet on either side. So until all the cars, until the plan includes all the cars off the Wedgewood Way area, and a closer look at the sight lines for that car that's sitting in front of the house, we remain, what's the word, objecting to this project with even more resolve than we had a month ago, because we're not seeing any progress whatsoever. Is that, is that time?
Actually, I held, I held, I, I let you go for a minute or two before I set the timer, and you've kept it under five so far. And so I think you've stood up to say you oppose this project.
So long as there's a car parked along the roadway as a permanent parking space, we have to object, because it's property that doesn't belong to them.
Okay, thank you for your comments, sir.
Thank you.
Anybody else that wants to comment from the neighborhood, from the public? Any, any-
Thank you.
In favor or opposed, doesn't matter, and you don't have to be a neighbor? Okay. I saw, I saw Mr. Madden giving me the high sign he wanted to comment. Go ahead.
I just have a, a couple of comments to make, only because I know how the board takes the testimony of people, particularly Abutter's, and people in the neighborhood. I was the person that was on the site with the, with the Abutter last Thursday night, with Ronnie. I brought him this plan and the existing conditions plan and explained, as I have to you folks tonight, exactly what we were proposing, okay? You know, I made a set of plans available to him. I told him where my office was. I told him that he could come down there anytime, and I would provide him with a full set of plans. The interpretations he's making or drawings, quite frankly, incorrect. There is no line of sight issue at Cranberry Highway. The stop line or the street line is a good 12 feet back from, from Cranberry Highway. So there is no issue with Cranberry Highway. The issue is people using Wedgewood Way inappropriately and people parking on, within the layout of the road. This is on the premises. That's the parking space. Mr.-
Simone.
Simone. When Ronnie and I went over there, we were waiting for him on the other side. He was on, he had a string tied to the bean poles that my company put up, marking the property line. And we talked specifically about where he did not want parking. And that string went right down that heavy black line. And there's a mailbox here, there's a bean pole in the corner. I told him, and I showed him this plan. There's a nine and a half by 22-foot parking space on the premises, not on-street parking. So, you know, I don't mind, you know, fielding, feedback from Abutters and what's, whatnot, but let's face it, it's, I mean, I'm going to just tell you the way it is. That is not an accurate statement. Those are not accurate statements that were made relative to Wedgewood Way, other than there are cars parking in the layout right now. And until such time changes where, where he gets a plan, you know, the U-Haul's going to stay there, I think. I think the tenants are going to park where they currently park. There's no resolve to any of it. This is, we think, the resolution to any problem that exists down there. And that's all I have to say about that.
I hear you. What you're saying is there's a bad condition, and you're offering a plan that you believe is a, an improvement to the existing condition. Mr. Simone's saying he's seen no change, but there's been no change approved, so there's nothing to change yet.
Well, we changed this.
The plan, the drawing, but what I'm saying is, is on-site-
Yes.
It would be inappropriate for any work to begin, because no permits have been issued to do any changes. But I get it. I, I, you know, McDonald's trained us all to go to one window and scream "I want", and by the time we get to the next window, if it's not ready, then it's late. So I understand that mentality. Again, anybody else from the public that wishes to speak, yea or nay? Okay. Do we want to keep, I'm speaking to the board now. Do we want to keep this open to the public? We're going to get a request from the applicant to continue.
We would like to withdraw at this time.
You'd like to withdraw your, then all we have to do is agree to let you withdraw. Oh, in favor of accepting a withdrawal, say aye.
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 Troy?
Aye.
That was you. I thought it was John. It came out of his computer. Nazzy, just-
Do we need a motion to close, then withdraw?
Let's do it.
No, I've withdrawn in the middle of hearings before.
Okay.
Very well, so it's drawn.
Yeah. So unanimously, we accept your withdrawal.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time this evening.
Thanks very much.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Two dash 23, Lynn Butterfield, 12th grade, Nacrode.
You guys want to pass anything you got in from that last one, so we can keep the- Oh, thank you. Did you need the exercise? I would have been up. Okay. Yeah, you did. I was going through, I said, geez, all these look alike, so I guess it's all the same.
Are you going to pick up the chair?
No, you stay with it.
Okay. So because Mr., because that chair was out of country when we opened, even though he zoomed in, he's going to ask me to continue the chair. Anybody else other than you coming up to the microphone at this point?
I would think Mr. Turner, but I think he just went out in the hallway for a minute.
He might be talking, okay. So let's just take a minute, give me a minute to get my things organized here. Would you, sir, this, Mr. Patel, would you stick your head out in the hall and ask Mr. Turner if he wants to come back in? I just recognized you, so I figured I'd use your name.
Mr. Turner, you want to come back in?
Doesn't want to, but he's going to.
He doesn't have to if he doesn't want to.
We, we got this Butterfield thing happening. I didn't know if you wanted to be in the room and we didn't want to get talking with. We were going to talk all about you, so we figured we'd do it with you present.
Appreciate that.
This has already been opened and I'm going to allow the, what are you, the applicant, aren't you?
Appellant, applicant.
Appellant, yeah. Yeah, I'm going to let the appellant go ahead and open up the meeting. Name and?
My name is Craig Hartwell. I represent Peace for Ponies, Peace for All Animals and Lenell Butterfield Trust, which is the owner of 12 Great Neck Road. We are here originally to appeal the building commissioner's to terminate a violation notice for a violation of a special permit from 2012. That violation notice has since been rescinded. So, I think if it pleases the board, maybe to have the building commissioner give an update on where we are with his violation notices and then we can, we can kind of take steps from there. It is our position that we should hear from the building commissioner first.
I, Paul, you know, I'm going to tell you what I think has happened here as a result of everything that's transpired so far. It appears to me, and somebody correct me if I'm, there were notices of violations, 1, 2, 3, and they've all been rescinded. And now, there's a new notice of violation. But the appeal that we're hearing is on 1, 2, and 3 that have been rescinded. So, there's really nothing to appeal at this point. If there was going to be an appeal, it would be appeal to your new notice of violation.
Correct. You either have to act on that or you have to appeal.
And neither has happened. As far as this board's concerned, there's no appeal in front of us this evening about the new notice of violation.
Correct.
So, I think our business is pretty much done. That's the way I see it, but I'm waiting to hear from the board. They're appealing notices that have been repealed, rescinded. So, I think like the last people that sat in front of us, everybody can get up and go home until they either act on the notice of violation in front of them and rectify it or come back with an appeal to the notice of violation. Because there's been, it would require a new appeal, I would assume.
I would agree. And the appeal period has not passed on those.
So, you still have time to put an appeal in?
We only got those letters last week. So, yes, we are in the process right now. Just to give some background, the building commissioner has stated that there's no veterinary hospital on the property and that there is no other violation, there's no use violation other than the property is being used as an animal rescue. And he's saying that we are in violation of the zoning bylaws by operating an animal rescue on the property. Our position all along has been.
But right now, we're discussing something that's not in front of the board. You're arguing the new notice of violation, which?
I'm continuing to argue the same argument we made since the beginning.
The ones that have been rescinded, rescinded.
That I would request the withdrawal without prejudice.
I think that's, I think that's where we are. Does anybody on the board disagree?
Is the attorney of the neighbor here?
Do you want to, do you have any comment?
Maybe he should.
Yeah, please do.
Thank you. Daniel Walsh for Joan Cooney, your Butter. If I understand the board's position that the current state is that there's a new violation.
If I may, if I may. I didn't really follow up from the beginning. I know I was online. You are, there's a, there's a violation notice from the commissioner and they appealed it.
Correct.
Okay. All right. So.
Then the commissioner withdrew it, rescinded it. There's, now there is no notice of violation that's being appealed. The violation that was appealed has been withdrawn, has been rescinded.
Okay.
So, that, so I just wanted a point of clarification. I think we're all saying the same thing, but I just want to make sure that.
Right. Exactly.
There's a new violation and that violation is for the reason of the special permit having not been exercised. So, that's the current.
I don't know. The new violation isn't before us.
Well, okay, okay. Fair enough.
That's what I want to clarify.
The new violation isn't before us. There's been a, we're, oh, everybody in the room is now aware that there's been a new violation sent. But that's not what we're here for.
Fair enough. So, the pending revised violation dated February 27, 2023 is the one that the property owner can choose to appeal.
They may appeal it. They may be here. You may be back.
We may cure it.
They may cure it. They may.
It is in fact a violation found.
They have, they have options that they haven't, that haven't expired yet.
Understood.
That's, so, I don't know. Do we even need to vote on anything? What do we, what's there to vote?
If he wants to withdraw, withdraw.
You're withdrawing?
We've made a request to withdraw without prejudice. Yes, sir.
And I ask the board to take, all in favor of accepting their request to withdraw without prejudice, all in favor, say aye.
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 Unanimously, your request to withdraw is approved. Thank you.
Taking your attention to the matter.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir.
Very much.
Yep.
All right. Very well. Next one, 623 Dorothy Piper and it's 40 Chippewa Drive. All right. What is that one?
This is, that's, we got to close this and I'm going to.
Fine. This should be trash.
This is, and look at all the stuff I had on it. Look at, I was all ready for them.
I like the withdrawals. I like withdrawals.
Yeah, me too. We've done it. We can keep, oop, no, no rubber band for this one. Sonia, I just, I just busted your rubber band, so I'll do the best I can. Did I pass it? I didn't pass anything out, so.
Oh, and I'm there, no.
Okay. And is this a new one? Does this have to be read in or has, we read this in last week, but you weren't here or something like that.
It was read for the.
This is Piper. This is a continued one. This has already been opened.
Was it discussed at all last time? No?
I believe we just read it into the.
Record and continue?
And continued.
I don't believe they were here, right?
Right. We weren't here.
Yeah. We're not here.
I was not here.
Yeah, yeah. No, okay. I didn't think so. But we did, we did open it to get the clock ticking. So, other than that, state your name and now you can.
Yeah, I can do. State your name and address for the record.
Dorothy Piper, 40 Chippewa Drive, Buzzard Street. Where are you?
All right. Sir, your name?
William Major. Went to Street, Bridgewater, Mass. I'm the builder.
Okay. So, let's hear what you're doing.
I'm looking to demolish the existing building and replace it on the same footprint.
Okay. Same exact print?
Same exact print.
Any height difference?
Single story as it exists now.
It's just a bad building that's wanting?
Yeah, it's showing its age. It has no foundation.
Has a new foundation?
It has no foundation.
Not new, no.
No.
No foundation, no slab.
Okay. Should be easy enough. Veronica, do you have a question on that?
That seems, seems pretty simple.
Jimmy?
Is this existing conditions or is this proposed?
That's existing. I'm not changing the footprint at all.
So, you've got two structures, a residence and then a existing one-story. What's the existing back building? Is that a?
It's a rental.
It's a, so.
A one-bedroom.
And, and over in this side of the yard, you have like a little gazebo thing?
Yeah. It's one of those portable gazebos, which I buy like Home Depot.
It's a real tough yard to put a bounce house in.
It was. We did fit a slide in there, a water slide.
Okay. All right. So, you're going to keep, you're going to keep two or you're going to take both down and?
Oh, no. The new one's already, the one I live in in the front has already been redone. Now, I'm looking to just demolish.
So, it's the one in the back you want to tear down?
Correct. And rebuild.
And rebuild it smaller, bigger, same size?
Same size.
Same height. Okay. He asked these questions already. I'm sorry.
Chip?
Go ahead.
I'm fine with this.
Troy?
It seems pretty straightforward to me. I'm fine with it.
Okay. Anyone on the public want to speak in favor or against? I hear none. Want to add anything before we close? Okay. That being said, can we get a motion to close?
You want to close the public hearing?
Yep.
So moved.
Do I have a second on that?
I'll second.
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, abstain, close 500. Any discussion?
So, we need, what do we need to hear? We need to grant?
Special permit.
Do we need variances because of the setbacks, whether it's pre-existing?
We need to make findings under Section 1355.
Finding under 1355, he doesn't mention this, the commissioner. Because it's the same footprint.
That's why I was asking, you know, he's given us.
He's, they're not changing the setback, the height or nothing.
That's right. Loathfully pre-existing non-conforming single-family or two-family residential structure may by special permit be demolished and replaced with a new structure on the same site provided by the zoning board of appeals determines. And there are four criteria.
Okay.
Can we, and they meet them?
No, it's not detrimental. Yeah, it's, replacement structure won't be substantially more detrimental. The replacement of the structure will not cause or contribute to undue nuisance hazard, et cetera. The replacement structure will not intensify any of the following nonconformities, building coverage, impervious coverage setback. Replacement structure will not create any new nonconformities.
And you already asked, nobody wanted to say yea or nay, so there's no pushback? Okay, I'm with everybody now.
Well, right. I understand what Mr. Buckland's saying, but that's not what the commissioner's saying. So, either we go with the commissioner's recommendation or we overturn his decision, say 1355 is required, then we act upon it as a special permit. So, what's your wishes?
Isn't that what we're doing, acting upon this as a special permit?
Mr. Turner is not mentioning the 1355. So, either we act with his recommendation or we overturn his recommendation, say 1355, then we.
What is he basing it on? I don't, I don't.
He's just saying it's a special permit.
Oh, so he just didn't.
He's saying 613, 621, and 628. He didn't mention 1355.
He may not, you know, he may not have even seen 1355.
Oh, okay.
Because usually when you move it, like when you make a bigger size furthering or higher, the 1355 kind of kicks in. But it's up to you, whatever you guys want to do. I believe we keep it the way it is. We will have finding based on the finding not detrimental and vote the way it's presented.
I think I agree with the chair. I make a motion to find this is not detrimental to the neighborhood. And then the 1355, we can issue a special permit and grant them the relief they seek.
We're not, we're not going to even mention the 1355.
We're just going to.
Special permit.
We disagree with him.
No, we agree with the commissioner.
Okay.
We disagree with Mr. Buckland.
We can't agree with the commissioner and also cite 1355?
Well, you got, he doesn't have it here. You have to overturn his decision, say you need a 1355.
Troy, you need a 1355 or?
If you guys read it, you need it.
Seems complicated.
Yes. We could do it.
It has to be.
We'll, we'll make a motion to overturn Mr. Turner's decision and move to 1355. Or just grant it the way it is, a special permit. So, we can choose.
Can you read his decision again, so?
Right here. Like your life here.
Yeah, there you go. His, his application is denied for density, for one principal residence per lot. So, we have to overturn his decision. Therefore, a special, in order to proceed with your applica, a special permit for what? A special permit under 1355?
Right.
He says under.
He listens, he doesn't say under 1355, but the only special permit we could grant would be under 1355.
Because it's not a new, those aren't, none of that is new or increasing.
I don't care.
Whatever. It means six half.
I'm waiting for it to say, yeah, okay, do it, but how do we say it?
So, I make a motion to overturn the commissioner's.
Decision?
Decision to.
For just a special permit?
Special permit for Article 1355 in place of what was.
And replace it with 1355. Okay, very well. Do I have a second on that?
Second it.
Second by Jim. All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, abstain. So, with 1355 goes.
Stand. Somebody said something online or anything?
Richard abstain.
Richard.
Troy, you agree?
Yes, I agree.
He agrees. So, we have 401 on 135. Now, on the 1355, does the board find it detrimental?
Did we ask the public?
No, that's it. It's closed.
Oh, it was closed already? I didn't realize that.
Does the board feels it's not detrimental? So, we act upon it as a special permit or it's detrimental?
No, we feel as though it's non-detrimental and we're acting under 1355 to again.
Special permit? Okay. Do I have a second on that?
I'll second.
Second by Veronica. All in favor, say aye. Aye? Jimmy?
Yeah, I said aye.
Veronica, you said aye?
Yes.
Richard?
Abstain.
And Richard abstain. So, now we have a special permit, 401. Now, on a special permit, does the board find it any detrimental?
No, we already, we already stated that we found it non-detrimental.
Well, we have, now the procedure.
And the public hearing has been closed?
Closed.
Okay. So, I'll make a motion to pass as, under 1355, as non-detrimental.
Very well. That's the finding. So, it's a special permit, finding not detrimental, substantially detrimental to the neighborhood. Motion by Veronica. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Troy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, abstain, the carries. Thank you.
Richard?
Abstain. I heard it.
He's consistent.
So, 401.
Get out of here quick before anybody changes their mind.
All right. Now, it's a big thing.
And I still actually have two of these, Jim. I don't think I gave you. Great Neck Road, who, which would.
All right. New public hearing.
Great Neck Road. That's.
This is that one. And this is that one.
7-23 MLC Homes LLC, 7 Depot Street. Sonia, what's, is that a comprehensive permit or a special permit?
I didn't hear this.
You read it, but what's filed right? Read the notice. Read the notice.
Okay, that's this one. All right, Jimmy. Is this the one? You don't need anything from the last one on the table? You don't need anything from the last one or funny, Richard?
Anything from the last one, buddy?
Yeah, I'll come get it. I'll get it. Who came last time? Let's just, and this is, I don't know what the heck this is. Oh, this is Peace for Ponies. So, more Peace for Ponies. Isn't it great being last? This needs to be read in? The zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on March 8, 2023 at 6:30 PM in Room 320 of the Wareham Multi Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass. 02571 to consider petition number 7-23 for a change of use requiring site plan review, special permit and/or variance from the requirements of Article 15, Article 3, Section 320 and 340.4, and Article 6, Table 623 under the Wareham zoning bylaws to MLC Homes LLC. To consider petition number 7-23 for a change of use requiring site plan review, special permit and/or variance from the requirements of Article 15, Article 3, Section 320 and 340.4, and Article 6, Table 623, under the Wareham zoning bylaws, to MLC Homes LLC, care of Attorney Pellegrini of 63 Main Street, 1 Bridgewater, Mass., proposing to change the use from a motel to 24 new apartments in an existing structure at 7 Depot Street, Wareham, Mass., which appears on Wareham SS's map 129, Lot 1152, in the commercial strip zoning district.
Okay, very well. Before we start, why the paper says comprehensive permit for 4B?
See, it's changed, it's changed.
Yeah, but a hand change. Is it online? What's the online says? The application, the notice?
It was advertised correctly, Jim.
It was advertised correctly.
Okay. Very well.
And it's just a typo on that.
Okay, very well. All right, name and address, please, and let's proceed.
Good evening, my name is Robert Pellegrini, I represent MLC Homes LLC. I have with me here Mike Kuradossi, he's the principal of MLC Homes, and Jim Pavlik from Outback Engineering. If you'd just give me a little bit of time, sort of, to give you a quick history of what we've done here, hopefully we can move along pretty quickly, seeing as we're the last ones. The current use per the denial letter, as mentioned, is a motel transient in nature. Their proposed use is residential R2 apartments. Once again, the zoning is strip commercial. We began this process by reviewing the housing production plan of the town and the economic development strategy that was done back in 2019. We met with the planner on several occasions, the housing authority, board of health, and on December 7 of last year, we attended a pre-application meeting. What I wanted to really note here is that the process so far has been wonderful, everybody's been very open, and we've been just trying very hard to just get as much of a dialogue as we can with the town, which has, I think, worked out well. My first meeting with the planner was sort of a question of should we go with a comp plan, or should we just give this a shot? And, you know, after going through the process, we decided to do this, so it's a, just a standard application. The application requests were all based upon the denial letter. I won't really get into those too much at this point. I really just wanted to get into what we have there presently. As you all know, it's a highly visible location with high traffic, and with the use which has been described as motel transient in nature. I understood that a little bit better after the pre-application meeting, what that means, and I gather that, at least in the past, it's been used as sort of a long-term motel, which to me reminded me a lot of an apartment use. So that sort of explains why we proceeded with the application request the way that we did. It seems like a very similar use that we're just trying to make legal. The application obviously isn't that simple. I know it's something that the board really doesn't see a lot of, but what we're trying to do, or the applicant is trying to do, and I'm trying to help him do, I should say, is we're trying to use something that's there, that has good bones, that works for the town, works for the people that live here, and is going to improve the neighborhood slightly. Obviously, with this high-traffic location, a commercial or a strip commercial use might not work that well. Having permitted several projects here many years ago, I know, and I'm sure you do, that the traffic queues right across the driveway just about all day long. So my thought process from the very beginning is this would hopefully be well-received as it's a low-traffic use. And the applicant is a young, local person that wants to do well. His first priority here was to try to cater to, you know, veterans, and he's been working with the housing authority, really, from the very beginning with that in mind. So moving on just quickly before we get into the plans, we did look at the, everything that the town, I'm sure, paid a lot of money to have done, that we use that as our guide up until now. The page 39 of the housing plan is really what I focused on. I can hand that out to you. If you're not intimately familiar with page 39, I wouldn't blame you. My word, I didn't read this enough, but I hope you don't mind me approaching.
That's all.
39 is just the second page. What we looked at was the priority housing needs, and once again, I'm hoping we read this correctly and that you agree, but this is just my opinion. What it says there is basically housing prices are out of reach for 40% of the residents aware him, I think we all know that. And then, you know, it sort of gets into the upfront costs of borrowing money and lending criteria, sort of nudges us towards looking at rental property. And it says that in town here, only a quarter of the housing available is rental, so it really pushes diversifying and increasing rentals, but not just any rentals. It really suggests sort of presenting a range of affordable options. Once again, I know this is unusual, but once again, we're trying to work with what's there, not knock it down, not that that's economically feasible by any means, but it's sort of a potential option to save something that's there and provide something that's certainly not going to create any new children. My client's willing to restrict it by deed or however you would want to just one person being the occupant. It's also going to be run by the housing authority, and they are going to have an office right there, so it's actually going to be easy to sort of monitor that. Also, with the economic development strategy, which is a longer document, it's just a little bit older, but it is, I think, quite important. Let me just quickly get that over to you. That was in 2019.
If I may interrupt, you're saying the housing authority is running it?
That's the proposal.
Be managing it.
Managing it. They've been meeting with Mike from the beginning, and they are...
Do you have to speak into a microphone?
Wait, yeah.
Oh, sorry.
Give us, approach, give us the papers, I can back the mic.
This is the economic development strategy. So to answer your question, Mr. Chairman, my client, one of his first stops was to meet with the housing authority. They would like to...
Manage the property.
Manage the property. There's going to be an office available just for them, located on the property where the office is currently, for the motel.
Yeah, but if they're going to manage, if it's going to be a housing project, it is going to be applied by the housing authority, or it has to be a comprehensive permit. Can be a private project, say the housing authority is going to run it. How are you going to do that?
So the housing, it's my understanding...
Name, your name, sir.
Mike Kuradossi, MLC Homes. It's my understanding, talking with Jackie and Robert from the housing authority multiple times, that they would be managing the property, so...
I understand, Jackie, you want to manage, but based on what? What's the legality of her managing the property?
So I would pay them a fee to manage the property.
And what happened when you decide not to pay them a fee?
Well, I mean, I don't plan to do that, so, but yeah, I mean, so the office...
Let's say, let's say one day that you don't pay them the fee, and the legality, the legality part of it, Jackie's a great lady, don't get me wrong, but she cannot manage a property that it's a private, has to be approved by the housing authority or by comprehensive permit. She's a housing authority, not a private man, so it's like, you can hire a private company, a management company, to run the show, because that's a private project. You can't have, hire a housing authority, it's paid by the town or the taxpayer, whoever paid them, to manage your property.
So, like, it's, so it's my understanding that the fee would go towards hiring, they'd have to hire someone to be there part-time to staff the office, and the money that I would pay them would come directly from me out of the rent, so I understand what you're saying, technically fire them and put in somebody else. But I want you to know that the, from the first day that I thought of this idea, I had a meeting, I went to their board meeting, I spoke with everyone there, they were in very high support of the entire project, thought there was a huge need for efficiency apartments.
There is definitely, there's like 800 people on the waiting list, no question asked.
Yep.
But, but when, if you, the way you're speaking to us, or you explain it to us, it's like you're saying it's an affordable project. There's a criteria for affordable project. There's a cap on what you could make a year, there's a deed rider, there's a lottery that the housing authority will run, or they pick, they have a list for their tenant who goes in there, there's a waiting list, there's all these things. These things cannot be applied to a private project. That's a private project. If you want to go to the housing authority, which is great, you got to come back with a comprehensive permit.
Okay.
Unless, in this, unless what you apply, what you applying here for tonight, if the board wishes to give you a variances, like 20 of them, I guess you could have it as a private project, then you could give it to anyone, but I guarantee you, Jackie cannot run it. I don't think the board of the housing would allow her to run it, but regardless of this matter, regardless who's running it, so with the way we're looking at it, I know we're in need for housing and everything, the way we're looking at it, it's a private project, and it requires variances.
Okay.
Okay? That's how we're going to approach it. Has nothing to do with housing. Okay?
Okay.
All right, very well.
May I add one more thing? So with talking to Jackie about the project, she had mentioned to me that they manage about 80% of their own stuff, and the other 20% is for private owners in the community.
Right, but those projects they manage, they comprehensive permit projects.
Okay.
In other words, if I have a duplex somewhere, I can say, "Oh, Jackie, run it for me." Doesn't work that way.
Okay.
Unless a comprehensive permit dictate the conditions who's running it. Sometimes, we have a lot of South Shore housing here, we have Denham housing, we have Dartmouth housing, they run, they manage housing here, and we have Wareham housing, so there's a lot of, anybody could use a voucher here. So, so I understand what you're saying, but it does not apply here.
Okay.
And of course, if we carry on, unless you prove me wrong, we want Jackie here and some proof, she's saying that she could do this. I will get to you, sir, in a minute. So, Counselor, go ahead.
Okay, that's actually, well, obviously, something that we're going to have to act upon before we can really proceed. Would you like me to complete what I was saying, or?
You could complete what you're saying, but the way I see it, I'm going to run it by the board quick, so we don't waste your time.
Okay.
Is this a private project or a housing project? I'm just going to go, Vonka, quick, what do you think?
This would seem private to me, I mean, based on how you're presenting it, you're not, it's not, this is not a 4B.
Right, Jimmy?
They're presenting a private project, this is not a municipal project.
Richard?
It's a private project, as far as I can see.
Troy?
I agree, private project.
And I agree, it's a private, so how you want to proceed?
Well, I, I was hoping to perhaps get a read from the board about how it feels about a private project here. As you mentioned, Mr. Chairman, there is some relief that would be required.
A lot of reliefs.
Yeah, and if the way you're saying it suggests to me, we probably want to pause on this and come back perhaps with a comprehensive permit.
If that's what you wish. Before, before, if you don't mind me, I want to take one, one, and who's on the public want to speak in favor of the project, in favor? Favor, sir, come forward. If somebody, you could take that chair, that's plenty of room.
This one?
Yeah. State name and address.
Good evening, thank you. My name is Robert Paul Lees, 14 Cory Drive. I am chairman of the Wareham Housing Authority. So basically, I'd like to clarify some of the comments and use of the word manage versus administer. The arrangement we have, I'm the chairman, Jackie's an administrator, we, we're the board, she works for us, she doesn't make decisions.
Exactly.
So a lot of the commentary that you have with Jackie, you have with Jackie, report.
Sir, just, you got to talk to us, you can't talk to the member, if you don't mind.
To me, I report to the board. So anyway, what we understood, and what we still understand, is they own, they will remodel, repair, and renovate the property.
Right.
They will have 24 units.
Whatever number is.
Those units won't be managed, we won't be managing, we'll be administering, just like we do, we have 104 units of property owned by us, and we have another 80 units that we administer for other property owners in the town.
Okay.
We will take applications, create a waiting list, vet the tenants, determine income eligibility, and determine their quote ability to pay the rent, or what they can afford. If that tenant comes in, or that applicant comes in with a voucher, that's something separate and aside.
Right.
If they charge $2,000 a unit for the rent, and the tenant pays 500, somebody's got to come up with that other 1,500, got nothing to do with us.
Right.
So that's all we'll be doing, is dealing with the residents. We're not managing the property. He will maintain it, empty the trash, pay all the bills, do everything.
I understand.
Nothing to do with the management of the property.
Right. Now, I understand the hundred-some units, that's the one on Sandwich Road you guys run, right?
Redwood and Sandwich.
Right, and the other 80, these are projects that were approved by this board, and the Wareham Housing Authority runs them. They weren't just a private person who comes saying, "Oh, you know what, run my project."
Yeah, I don't know.
Absolutely. For instance, Littleton Drive, who's going to be running Littleton Drive? They are?
No, it's going to be a private management company.
So they're not giving it to Wareham Housing?
No, they're not.
Okay, so some of them don't, but...
Yeah, we get new, we get new, we get new applicants and new tenants paying rent every day in a different location, so we're not managing anything. Like I said, we're handling the paperwork.
Right.
We're not managing the property, we won't be having any management authority responsibility with this.
I understand, except the one that you own, but you also manage, what's that? Me? Oh, okay, so, but you always manage vouchers as well? Wareham vouchers, Wareham voucher works a little different than the housing, so. Somebody has a Wareham voucher, come to me, rents a house, you donate, whatever, you pay 1,500, they pay 500, like you said, that's a separate thing than the, than, that's a housing voucher, separate what you manage. This, what he wants to do.
That's what he wants to do.
That's what he wants to do. So just to make it clear, what you want to do, it's a private thing. You want to do a veteran something like this, and I'm sure there's a lot of veteran funds out there, you want to do an affordable project, but you got to come back with a comprehensive permit.
Okay.
And is all the board agrees with me?
I don't disagree with anything I've heard.
I think the project of this size, 24 units...
I think the project of this size, twenty-four units, is a lot, and with there's no cap on profit and all that, I mean, the cap on the profit makes the person have to put the money back into the property, because you're only taking away so much, and things like that.
Well, unless you could prove, unless you could prove the statute of a variance, if you could prove the section seventeen, then you could have it. It's very hard to prove, you know that.
Yeah.
That's why you're smiling. So otherwise, otherwise your only avenue, I, as you hear, correct me, anybody on the board, please stop me if I'm wrong, it's a comprehensive permit.
But whether it's a comprehensive permit or not, there's still square-footage concerns to be addressed.
Many variances, many.
Variances, okay. I just want to go, I just want to say out loud that this gentleman here said they're involved, how many units do you currently manage that are two hundred and twelve square The minimum square foot for a residence is six hundred and, six hundred and thirty?
Six fifty, excluding bathrooms, hallway, and closet.
So you're supposed to, you're supposed to...
All the hundred and four units that we own and operate, like five hundred, seven...
Right, but they were built on the seven, in the seventies. With Jimmy trying to say, any building that contains five units or more...
Yeah.
Not two units. If it's a building, two units, you could do four hundred square feet. Five units or more, you need to have six hundred fifty square feet of living space excluded, hallways, bathrooms, and closet. Unless, if you're a forty B, comprehensive permit, you can get a waiver. If you, a private, you could get a variance. We're not saying in comprehensive permit, if they come back with a comprehensive permit, say for veterans, the board very well might say, you know what, a veteran can only afford the two hundred square feet. The board might say yes, I'm not saying, I'm not speculating. Then, I'm sure the attorney will have to see this, the housing, Boston Housing will have to approve it, selectmen will have to say yes, there's a process.
Can I just address the square-foot size?
Yes.
When you're dealing with public housing, as we are, when these properties were built, and they're being built all over the country, or all over the state, and being remodeled and expanded upon, in public housing, with allowing only one or two elderly individuals renting it, or one or two veterans, spouse, whatever, we highly favor the smaller unit for several reasons. Number one and two, obviously, you're going to use less inflow of water, you're going to expand...
Smaller unit or less occupants?
Either way, let me get to that.
Okay.
By having a smaller unit, we now have one or two people living in our properties. However, you make a larger unit, they somehow find a way, because they're paying based on their income, of bringing in unregistered residents who are helping them pay, but aren't helping pay the rent. So we discourage a larger-sized unit for the environment, and to eliminate fraud, and to eliminate people living in there without paying their share.
I totally understand. Plus, if a veteran, if he's living on nine hundred dollars, he can't afford the bigger, higher electric bill, higher heating. Totally understand, but this is a part of the comprehensive permit. So like I said, it might be very well approved by a comprehensive permit.
Yeah, that's all I'm saying.
If they're all sailors that are coming off a submarine, two hundred and twelve feet is going to seem big, they heart bunk, man, you know?
That's right, that's why I'm not saying, give them six hundred.
But if they're Air Force guys, six hundred and fifty is going to seem mighty small.
Not the guy who's going up in the capsule, there's no six hundred feet in the capsule.
So...
All I'm saying is, we encourage smaller.
All right, well, it was very nice for the information, but, great information for everyone, but none of this applies tonight.
I understand.
None of this applies tonight. So we could argue all night, the statute requirement for variance, we could listen, you already know the answer.
No waste of time.
There's not, yeah, exactly. Or you could come back with a comprehensive permit.
We will come back.
All right, so which is to withdraw?
Do you wish to continue or withdraw?
I think we probably have to withdraw and reapply.
Exactly.
Just everybody else that tried to get in front of us tonight.
I know.
That's the first night we have so many withdrawals.
Okay.
All right. So councillor, what's your wishes?
I would ask for a motion to withdraw.
Okay, can we entertain that motion?
So moved.
We have a motion by Jim to withdraw seven dash twenty-three MLC Home, seven Depot Street, by Mr. Akabachi. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Second by Richard, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, Troy, you aye?
Aye, aye.
Yes, okay, so five zero zero withdrawal.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, we have also some discussion on the article for spring town meetings.
You guys want to stuff the folder?
Are we, this time, we're going to get it right? Are you going to get it on time, or what?
I hope so.
That's what happened when Sonia's not here. Mr. Akabachi, you always give her a hard time.
Yeah, I know, but...
She wasn't here, Article six went belly up last time.
Leaving again, now she's going out, she's going to, you know, she's suffering from toleio, so she's going to have to go to the hospital.
Toleio, I like that. I like that, toleio.
Toleio, yeah, they're going to catch it before it becomes measles.
Here you go. Anything else I discussed, table six? I guess we did last time.
So what, so what, whatever happened with our comments about number of cars per bay, did that get submitted to the planning board?
It's going to public hearing, and that'll be heard to be an article on town meeting, in the special town meeting.
It's going to be, so they agreed with us, and it's going to be on the next...
They said to take it forward, and...
For the next, that's what we experienced tonight, right?
That's right.
Okay, yeah, because, and I think, that public hearing is gone, right? I think, as that, Mr. Madden Show was, was it fifteen, twenty? I think that this is absurd, saying you ignore what's in there, and you only address what you're presenting. That's crazy.
It doesn't...
It doesn't make sense. It should be, it's the same law, it should be all addressed.
Yeah.
Right? Don't you agree, Richard?
It depends what the people were paying you.
I mean, how could you...
You're adding all this, and then you want to take this piece and take that piece and put it in, even though that you have all this other stuff that's on the building.
What is it?
Are you having a discussion?
We haven't closed the meeting yet.
We haven't closed the meeting.
No.
No, they withdraw, it's gone, they're gone. They withdraw, it's over. We could discuss it all we want. So, so this is something we definitely have to address, bring it to planning board, and they have to fix that language. Anytime you touch a lot that has any existing business, residential, and you want to add to it, it has to be reconfigured, don't you guys agree?
You have to count it all, you mean?
Exactly.
I think you could reread that and interpret it differently if you wanted to. I get that, I get that we found, somebody found some words and they wanted to try to, just like the pony people wanted to use the state law, not the local bylaw, but, you know, words are words, but, you know, I agree. If there's, if you've got a parking lot that can hold fifty cars, and it's full of fifty cars, just because you're asking for a new use doesn't mean those fifty cars don't count.
Exactly, that's what I'm saying.
They're existing.
They're existing, and you have a problem with them, so you have to address the matter, you know? So there's something, can we get this soon?
Yeah, it's under, it's under work right now. There's a subcommittee of the planning board working on the...
Jonathan, that's your new homework.
Arigo fifteen.
Seriously, this is something that has, definitely has to be addressed, because it's a mess.
And I believe the commissioner said we ought to address parking as a, as a whole.
Exactly.
I mean, all the way through it.
The curbs usually come bang on the window of your car if you're parking.
And the other thing is, this is just one special spot, that is a tough spot to be putting in that, I mean...
Right, and that's why I personally...
That area down there is just a tough spot, the way it's, you know, you want one road in and one road out, there's no rules. I mean, there's, there's not going to be long before things in that business are going to start encroaching under the neighborhood, and then what?
Right, and that's why I believe there should be a site plan review, because that will open, there's other firm that will be looking after us, reviewing it, and, I mean, the entrance, the radiuses of the curbs, the drainage, we have none of this in front of us, so we don't know what's going on.
Oh, what the purpose of that section there is to say that if there's a substantial change in the, in the property, then you go through site plan review. So it's not that saying that if you were to add on a three hundred square-foot office, even if there were fifty cars on the site, you wouldn't necessarily have to look at all fifty spaces and reconfigure them, because you're just adding in a small office and just one more parking space, or two more parking spaces. But if you have a big enough project, and you're adding ten parking spaces, then you have to go through the review.
Well, I understand what you, but this is the opposite.
The opposite.
That's totally the opposite. What you're saying makes sense.
Substantial change.
But what they doing, it's a substantial change, but what you're saying, I totally understand, say, for instance, with the Woodlands Cove, the hundred fifty units?
Right, Woodland Cove, hundred fifty.
Say Woodlands Cove, hundred fifty, it's went through the process, they have parking lots and stuff, say they still haven't an open space, and they want to add two units, we could act upon the two units, or the five units, if they have parking for them, because the other one are properly parked, properly designed, the drainage, everything. This one, you're taking a mess and adding to it. That's what we doing.
Well, if Woodland Cove wanted to put in a car dealership, they could, because all the hundred, two hundred, two hundred and seventy-five cars that are parked there don't count.
Well, when you're under a special...
Yeah, there you go, same example. Imagine if you do say that, that's crazy.
When you're under a special permit, it covers the whole property, not just what you're adding to it. So you can look at the whole, the whole property when you have a special permit.
Well, I'm not an attorney, but you guys should, Jonathan, like I said, that's your homework. You guys should discuss it with Bowen and bring it to planning board.
Well, the language is the language, maybe we could, you know, and...
Clarify it somehow, but for me, it's a side plan.
As a board, you know, we can't just act irrationally and just say, yeah, sure, they wrote something stupid, and now we're going to approve something stupid.
Nope. I'm not.
At least I don't, yeah. Anyway, I make a motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, abstain, oppose, fight.
We were having, another associate member was applying there, whatever happened to that?